Hey. This meeting is called to order. First, we'll have public comment. This is the time, if you want to speak on something that's not on the agenda, could you please come forward to the podium and state your name? And what it is you'd like to say? Is there anyone who would like to make a comment? No? Okay, then we'll move into our agenda. Tonight, we have first a request for release of covenant, and then we have three decisions that we're planning on, and two public hearings. So let's begin with the request for release of covenant. Jed, are you filling in for the town planner?
Till he returns, I suspect that might be.
Yes, it looks like.
I was just gonna say, I'm usually not covered under the microphone for the public, so I'll just wait.
Good evening. You want to tell us about this release of the covenant?
Oh, absolutely. All righty. Loews Way is a... Been recently inspected by the engineering division. The planning board approved a subdivision plan to create two additional lots. The work that was to be done was an extension of the sort of old-school gravel road that's out there. The work has been completed. It's been inspected by the engineering division. I was out there this afternoon and confirmed the conditions are as stated and as described by the engineering division. And it is proper for the board to vote to release the covenant.
Thank you. Could we have a motion to release?
I move that we release the covenant for Zero Chase Road.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Planning board decisions. The first up, McSweeney Companies.
You're very welcome.
Oh, you're all set?
Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you. Okay, then. McSweeney Companies, definitive plan application to create a five-lot subdivision located on Palmer Ave. Map number 3503002000. And this has been before us before. Several times, we have a motion. Is there any further discussion wanted on this issue?
I'm not certain that we closed the hearing at the last meeting. Likely, we didn't. But we would likely want to close the hearing. If we didn't, we can close it twice. I don't think it's an issue.
Okay, no, we didn't. I wouldn't. But I'd like to know that the discussion is complete. Then let's move to close the hearing. Could I have a motion?
I move that we close the hearing on the McSweeney Companies, Inc. definitive plan application to create a five-lot subdivision located on Palmer Avenue, adjacent to number 711 Palmer Avenue. Map number 3503002000.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's closed. Could we have a volunteer to read the motion? Would you like to do that?
Well, that's volunteering, huh?
Yes.
He's got it in his hand. He's all cut out.
He's ready. I can see it.
Okay. Motion that the planning board vote to approve on the application of McSweeney Companies, Inc. applicant under Article 4, definitive plans, Chapter 305 subdivision regulations of the Town of Falmouth. The plan entitled definitive subdivision plan McSweeney Lane, prepared for McSweeney Companies, Inc., in Sippawisit, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath, scale one inch equals forty feet, date April 14, 2021, with the revision date of June 22, 2021, together with a plan entitled drainage areas prepared for McSweeney Companies, Inc. in Sippawisit, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath, scale one inch equals forty feet, date April 14, 2021, with revision plans of July 9, 2021, along with a plan entitled plan and profile prepared for McSweeney Companies, Inc. in Sippawisit, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath, date April 14, 2021, with a last revision date of July 9, 2021, and a plan entitled construction details prepared for McSweeney Companies, Inc. in Sippawisit, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath, date April 14, 2021, with the following findings and conditions. Findings. Applicant applied to the planning board to divide a 5.03-plus-or-minus-acre parcel into five lots in accordance with Article 4, Section 305-11 definitive plan. The parcel is located on the north side of Palmer Ave, a town road between 711 Palmer Avenue and 731 Palmer Avenue and is bounded by the northeast... To the northeast by the Shining Sea Bike Path. The parcel is vacant. Treeed land within the single residence B zoning district RB. The applicant's plan shows five lots fronting on a 465 linear foot roadway that will terminate in a cul-de-sac. Two of the five lots will also have frontage on Palmer Avenue. At a meeting held on December 22, 2020, the planning board voted to endorse as approval under the subdivision control law not required, A&R, a plan that would divide the parcel into five lots that comply with the dimensional requirements for lots in the RB zoning district. Division of the parcel, as shown on the A&R, would result in the construction of five separate curb cuts onto Palmer Ave. The planning board has taken into account the alternative division of the parcel allowed by the A&R plan and considering the plan hereby approved and in granting the following waivers of provisions of the Falmouth subdivision regulations, Town Code, Chapter 305. Waivers. Section 305-11 to not require the professional lands surveyor to file traverses tables. Section 305-12 to accept the cross-section and other details shown on the approved plan and profile in the construction details plan. Section 305-24 to allow center line of the proposed street, shown on the plan as McSweeney Lane, to be less than 300 feet from the center line of Goodings Way. The distance between the center lines of the two streets will be 190-plus-minus feet. The proposed street may be located, as shown on the approved plan, and is not required to be centered in the proposed street layout. Sections 305-30, 305-37, and 305-40 to waive the installation of a sidewalk due to the short length of the proposed street. And since there is no sidewalk on Palmer Ave, is the parcel... As the parcel is heavily treeed and vegetated, grass plots and street trees within the layout of McSweeney Lane may be partially waived, consistent with construction requirements. Applicant may leave existing vegetation within the street layout. And the extent of grass plots and new trees to be required may be determined by the planning board or its designee during construction if the remaining vegetation does not meet the requirements of Section 305-30. Conditions. One, the road shall be constructed according to the plan as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of the decision is necessary. Two, to secure construction of the road and installation of municipal services, as shown on the plan, if the plan is recorded, a suitable covenant or bond shall be delivered to the board or GL, Chapter 41, Section 81U, 7th paragraph, but the covenant or bond shall not apply to lots 1 and 5, which have frontage on Palmer Ave. Pursuant to Section 241-82B of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, no permit for occupancy of the new construction on the lot, subject to the covenant, may be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Three, applicant and its contractor will have a pre-construction meeting with any necessary town representative prior to construction of the new street. Four, applicant shall obtain a street opening permit from the town engineering department prior to the start of construction of the new street or any driveway onto Palmer Ave.
Second. Any discussion? John?
Discussion, yes. Under findings, the sentence, the last sentence, the planning board has taken into account the alternative division of the parcel allowed by the A&R plan and considering the plan hereby approved and in granting the following waivers or provisions of the Falmouth subdivision regulations, Town Code, Chapter 305. I don't think the fact that this board had approved an A&R plan previous had anything to do with approving this plan. It makes it sound like we were coerced into approving this subdivision plan, because if not, then they were going to do an A&R plan or try to do an A&R plan. I don't like that sentence being in this decision at all.
Would it be acceptable to you if it were struck?
Yes.
Is there any agreement with what John is saying?
Well, Bob has to agree with it, because it's a modification of the motion.
You're making a motion to strike that?
To remove that sentence, yes.
So he's making a motion, so we need to second it.
I'll second it.
So...
Any discussion on this motion?
I have discussion. It definitely impacted me. I feel that this is far superior. And I was much more ready to move in this direction, because I didn't want to see five driveways.
Therefore, you don't want this struck?
I do... I'm... Yes, I don't want it struck. But I don't... We'll see how the vote goes.
We will.
It's not a big deal.
Any other comments on it? I tend to agree with John, but let's vote.
So we're striking?
The final sentence of the findings.
What's the last sentence?
Okay, but what about division of the parcel, as shown on it, could result?
A lot might.
So do we want to strike that as well?
I want to strike that whole sentence.
Okay, because it's two sentences. The last two sentences, then. If we're talking about the sentence...
Then you're correct. Then you're correct.
So it'd be the last two sentences.
The last two sentences.
So the only sentence in that paragraph with findings would read, "At a meeting held on December 22, 2020, the planning board voted to endorse as approval under the subdivision control law not required, A&R, a plan that would divide the parcel into five lots that comply with the dimensional requirements for lots in the RB zoning district." Period. So that's what that finding would say.
Do you accept that amendment?
Well, we're gonna vote on it. Yeah, so I would agree with John, that we can strike the rest. I don't think it's necessary.
So this is being added to John's amendment?
Amendment, right.
No, no. I'm just clarifying what John wants to strike.
We're striking two sentences.
He's striking two sentences.
Yes, we're striking two sentences rather than one.
The last two sentences.
I agree with that. That'd be my motion.
That's your motion?
Yeah, to strike the last two.
Further comments on it? Then let's vote. All in favor of striking the last two?
Aye.
Aye.
This struck. Okay. Could we call him? Any further discussion about the motion? The main motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Thank you very much. We got there. Okay. Moving on. Now we have a second motion. The applicant is Il Pond Realty LLC, site plan review application to allow the addition of a new walkway and steps to the rear entrance of the above-referenced property and to allow restaurant to use, in addition to the existing food market deli known as the Woods Hole Market, and provisions on 87 Water Street, without providing any off-street parking. Paul?
Are there any public comments associated with this?
I don't think so.
Yeah, there's one here.
Because last meeting, we told this off of a public comment. There's no public comment. I move we endorse it.
I believe there was a letter of support.
I take it back. There is one from Michael J. Conley and Linda M. Conley, accepting this letter to support the petition of the Woods Hole Market for certain variances. So it's in support of this action. I don't think there was anything further added to the record on this.
There was not.
There is not. So we can move forward?
And we did close the hearing, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Oh, it's a site plan review, so we don't have to close it anyway.
Okay. Could we have the motion?
Do you want me to read it? Okay. I move that the planning board vote to approve the application of Il Pond Realty, Inc. under Article 39, excuse me, site plan review of the zoning bylaw to build a proposed exterior deck and stairs to open a Class 1 or 2 restaurant to operate mainly on the second floor while the first-floor grocery store and deli continue to operate as depicted on plans entitled Plan and Proposed Deck Prepared for Il Pond Realty LLC for Lot 0, Number 87 Water Street in Woods Hole, Falmouth, Mass., prepared by Holmes &amp; McGrath, dated May 8, 2019, with latest revision August 9, 2021, scale one inch equals 10 feet, along with elevations dated February 9, 2021, with latest revision August 6, 2021, scale 1/4 inch equals 1 foot, I guess it would be, with the following findings and conditions. Findings. The applicant, Il Pond Realty LLC, is seeking site plan review approval to build a proposed exterior deck and stairs to open a Class 1 or 2 restaurant to operate mainly on the second floor while the first-floor grocery store and deli continue to operate. The restaurant would serve breakfast and dinner and would not serve lunch. However, the applicant will be requesting a liquor license that would allow the restaurant to serve alcohol to deli customers in the designated sitting areas. The applicant is also proposing a new walkway and steps to the rear entrance of the property. The proposed seating will be reduced from 69 to 67 seats. The planning office, in consultation with the building department, finds that the proposed project is compliant with site plan guidelines. The planning board finds that proposed modifications to the site plan conforms to all the requirements and findings pursuant to Article 39 of the zoning bylaw. Conditions. One, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for occupancy of the new construction shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Two, construction of this project shall follow the Town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard Conditions document, which can be found on the engineering division's page of the Town's website. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the planning board, who would be the permitting authority for this project.
Second.
Discussion? Any discussion?
No.
Oh, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved unanimously. Six-zero. At the rate we're going, we'll be out before.
Keep it up.
Okay. I don't think we did close this hearing.
Did we? The one with Foley?
Yeah, the Foley. I don't think we did. Preliminary plan application? Don't remember.
Preliminary subdivision plan?
Yeah.
No, we did not.
We did not. So move to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the applicant, Petition Commissioner Edward Foley Vaughn, Esquire and Todd Rainey Jr., trustee of OBR Realty Trust, preliminary plan application to create a four-lot subdivision located at 336 Old Barnstable Road, and lots 2 through 6 Adeline's Way.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So we had a discussion about this at our last meeting. We proposed sending our draft decision to Attorney Wall in order to make sure that this was fine with him and wasn't going to create him any issues getting through the petition commission. So Attorney Wall has reviewed the decision. He thought the language he put in there was fine. I do want to highlight some of the things that we did include, because there were some concerns about what if these lots, all of a sudden, become lots that are over top of the unbuiltable lot in the rear? So in our decision, we noted that the rear portion of the property that's deemed non-builtable out this is condition four, shall remain non-builtable. We noted that neither in section number six, neither lot C nor lot D, those are those two lots at the back that butt up to the unbuiltable lot, shall be further reconfigured through subdivision control nor through general law, Chapter 81X, to extend the lots towards Lot 00, non-builtable. And what 81X is, is that is... You have the ability in Massachusetts to erase a lot line between parcels. A surveyor can do it. Doesn't have to come to the board at all. They can come in, erase the lot lines, and record it with the registry of deeds. So we would like to think that with our decision that will be filed with the registry, that someone couldn't come in and just do this 81X plan and erase those lot lines without some further discussion. So that is why that provision was in there. And also, for five, we had talked about that easement to the back of the property. How would you get to the back of that to clean that up? And we suggested the language about placing that easement between those two properties, not on either the north side or this house side of the property. And all those things are in the conditions. They have all been reviewed by Attorney Wall, and he had no issues with those. And I believe the guy who drew the plan is here. If you want to hear from him while we're in the neighborhood. But this is good to go, from our perspective.
Mike?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And for the record, Mike Boselli, Falmouth Engineering. I just want to... I'm here just to listen, but I also wanted to say that we're gonna take into account the recommendations of the town planner on some of the issues related to the cul-de-sac. I also spoke to town engineer Scott Schluter about a couple matters with regard to the aggressive... I'm gonna quote your planner, aggressive curve at the end. We're gonna work those details out prior to filing the definitive. So it'll be very similar, but slightly different than what you're approving tonight, which is the purpose of the preliminary plan. So we'll work through your staff, town planner, and town engineer, and you'll have a new and improved version when you see it under the definitive.
Thank you. Thank you. Then I guess we're ready to hear the motion.
Do you want me to read it?
Would you like us to read it?
I don't mind. I've got a horse yet.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. I move that the planning board vote to approve the application, and you've got to insert the word "for", a preliminary subdivision plan of partition commissioner Edward Foley Vaughn, esquire and Todd Rainey Jr., trustee of OBR Realty Trust, under Article 8, preliminary plans, Chapter 305 subdivision regulations of the Town of Falmouth, for a plan entitled preliminary subdivision plan prepared for partition commissioner Edward Foley Vaughn, esquire and Todd Rainey Jr., trustee of OBR Realty Trust in Falmouth, prepared by Falmouth Engineering, dated June 10, 2021, scale of one inch equals 40 feet, with the following findings and conditions. Findings. The applicant is applying to the planning board for a preliminary subdivision in accordance with Article 7, Section 305-8A preliminary plan. This was a previously approved six-lot planned residential development from 1997. The address is 336 Old Barnstable Road, and the total area of land to be subdivided is 10.3 acres. The applicant is proposing four lots ranging from 49,500 square feet to 72,400 square feet with a 44-foot-wide roadway with cul-de-sac. The proposed roadway will differ from the current layout by having a right turn at the cul-de-sac end of the road. The proposed location is in prime farmland in the Green Pond, Coastal Pond overlay. Conditions. The plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to 240-183B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for occupancy of the new construction shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Two, the applicant will obtain an approved street opening permit from engineering prior to the start of any construction. Three, the applicant shall extend the right-of-way to the southern edge of the property per Section 305-24A2. Four, the rear portion of the property, Lot 00, that is currently deemed a not a-building lot, as stated on the plan, shall remain non-builtable due to environmental concerns. Five, an easement along the property line of Lot C and Lot D shall be created to allow access to remediate Lot 00. The non-builtable lot, the easement area, shall be marked with concrete bounds. Six, neither Lot C nor Lot D shall be further reconfigured through subdivision control nor through general law, Chapter 41, Section 81X, to extend the lots towards the Lot 00, non-builtable.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, opposed? You're opposed? And one opposed. So five in favor, one opposed, and it's approved. What's your opposition, Bob?
I just don't feel right about it. We're getting in the middle of a family scrap.
Right.
And I'm not comfortable with that.
But we got it before us. We've got to act.
Yeah.
One way to other.
That's an interesting argument. I didn't realize that's supposed to impinge on our thinking.
Probably isn't.
It probably isn't, but it does. It's one of those things.
And there's also no guarantee that the lot's gonna get cleaned up. There was nothing in our decision that said that, so... I mean, there were just too many open-ended...
But there's a court order that's been ignored for years.
But it's been ignored for years. That's the point.
Well, yes, but I don't think an action of ours is going to change that.
I know. So I just voted my conscience, and I said no.
No, okay. I just wanted to know what you were thinking.
I feel the same way. We said they can't use the state law to extend... We may not be able to do that, but we said it, you know?
So if I can point out, this is a preliminary plan?
Right.
So with the decision on the preliminary plan, we'll file that.
We get another shot at this.
They have seven months to come back with a definitive plan. So when they come back with a definitive plan, we'll have 90 days to review that, plus the time that we didn't take to review this. So we'll have essentially about 100 days to review the definitive plan. And at that point, you file the definitive plan, and those are the things that really where the rubber meets the road. Those are those conditions that are in place. So the preliminary plan is advisory. Most people don't even file a preliminary plan. You're required to file a preliminary plan if it's an industrial subdivision, but you're not under Massachusetts general law on a residential subdivision. And the total sum you have, 135 days to approve a subdivision plan, is divided, 45 for the preliminary, 90 for the definitive, if they split them up. But if they don't get the plan in within seven months after we vote on the definitive or the preliminary, the clock resets, and we have 135 days to file, to vote on the definitive. But as I've said before, typically, if it needs to be, the time period will be extended by mutual consent of the board and the applicant. Because as a board member in a town I used to work in used to say, "We're always ready to vote, but you may not like the vote that you get." So most people will extend the deadline, if necessary, to resolve some issues. So most people will extend the deadline, if necessary, to resolve some issues. So tonight was essentially a perfunctory approval, as everyone voted perfectly well, and they've got seven months to bring us back something else, and we'll be putting for show at that point.
And what we'd be looking for then particularly is whether or not they've taken any action at all on cleaning up or agreeing to post a bond or making some, giving the town some assurance they're going to clean that back lot.
Well, what Attorney Wall said is the proceeds from selling lots would pay for that, but they can't sell any lots until the subdivision's been approved.
Right, right.
Until the subdivision's been approved and the road's been built, and the planning board's had a bond, and the planning board's reviewed the bond, and the planning board has voted to release the lots based on the bond of the work that has to be done. And at that point, they can sell a lot and create some proceeds to clean up the back part of the site.
So the answer is yes. When they come back with the definitive plan, we're looking for a bond.
I think all this conversation should have happened during the course of the meeting. I think we're out of line to talk about it.
Well, essentially, 45 days is what we had. It's preliminary.
It's a preliminary plan. Let's move on.
And we'll see them. We'll see them in seven months.
Now, moving on, we have a public hearing. This is our final public hearing for our proposed mixed residential and commercial overlay district. We, I believe everybody got the latest draft.
Yeah.
Yep?
Yes.
And I want to thank Jed for all of his work in putting this stuff together and getting that to you guys.
Yep. Thank you very much, Jed. This is good. And the work Tom and John and Jim and Eric have put into this all the way down the line. So if you've had a good chance to look it over, do you have any comments now? Jed, do you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Judd Cornoch, Assistant Town Planner. As you may remember, at the last public, or at the last planning board meeting, there was discussion about Item K in Section 240-260 in the Procedure and Development Requirements section. And it related to the question about what the planning board would like to or be allowed to essentially waive as part of a new application. Your original language indicated that setbacks and building coverage, as well as the bulk of structures and parking, be included. And so there was a little bit of debate. The subcommittee met on August 17th, discussed this at length. And before you, and as you can see up on the screen, the proposal is to eliminate the words "setback" or "setbacks" and "building coverage" from Item K and only leave the bulk of structures and parking as items that the planning board can waive. And then, in addition to that, in Item J, minor changes to allow for a maximum 20-foot front setback and a minimum 10-foot rear setback and a minimum 10-foot side setback. Those are the items that the subcommittee discussed, and we put forward for edits for you to consider tonight.
Anyone have any questions about this? Any comments? Are any, no problems with the map? If that's where we are, we're ready for a motion.
Well, actually.
Close the public hearing.
We do have some comments on the bylaw we received today. As testimony, as you know, we, people can come in and testify during the hearing. They can send their written comments in. In fact, we ask them to send written comments to us after they testify. So you have in your packet comments from Mike Galasso and from the Falmouth Climate Action Network. And I'd be happy to read those into the record. In fact, Eleanor Ling from the Falmouth Climate Action Network is here. I don't know, Eleanor, do you want to talk about your comments?
I read both those letters. They're no different than when they made public testimony the last time we hear them. I don't think we need to go over these points. Those things are exactly what they said the last time.
So the comments I noted are very similar from the Falmouth Climate Action Network. And while there's some cross-membership between the two, those last comments were from the Falmouth Energy Committee. So they're two different organizations with comparable sort of comments. I just want to make clear on that. But the comments are very similar in nature to what we heard from the Falmouth Energy Committee.
We've all read them, right?
Yeah.
We have, yep.
I think we're good.
However, as a courtesy, Eleanor, there's something you want to say?
Good evening. Actually, I didn't plan to say anything because I think that, you know, the letter we sent in this afternoon is pretty self-explanatory. And Mr. Bott is correct that the Falmouth Climate Action Network comment is similar to the Falmouth Energy Committee. However, there are some additional, you know, recommendation and suggestion in the letter this afternoon. So I hope that you have, you know, the chance to review it later and take it into consideration.
I'd just like to assure you that it was considered, and we've discussed it at each of the separate subcommittee meetings and have arrived at the result that you see.
Okay. Because I think that, you know, it is, it could be a missed opportunity if, you know, there is no provision for more energy conservation measures and also for renewable energy incorporated in the bylaw.
Thank you. I appreciate all your concern. And as we had said before, really, the place for these would be to affect all new building in town and retrofitted building rather than on this single project. But thank you. So we certainly agree with the intention and hope to act on it at some point in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we ready to move forward? If we have a motion to close the hearing?
I moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion? Bob, I think it's in your left hand.
This one here.
Well, actually, those are, there are three things on the table for us this evening. With the close of the hearing of mixed-use residential, we would propose to submit three related articles to town meeting. So those three related articles to town meeting are, one, to move to amend the zoning bylaw to include Section, Article XV, I-9, which is 49 for you Roman scholars, as amended by the planning board. You'll notice that the definitions, and we talked about this at the subcommittee meeting, I think we talked about this at the last hearing, the definitions that were originally in the mixed-use residential bylaw have come out because they go into the definition section of the bylaw. So one of the principal differences with this draft versus the last one is the definitions have come out. So there is a second article to go to town meeting, which is the one you see before you. It's the second one stapled together. A devote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 240-13, definitions. By adding the new definitions related to the mixed-use residential commercial overlay district. So those are the definitions that we put into the bylaw. We've been talking all along about, you know, 240, 256 through 240, 261 as the Mr. Cod bylaw, but the definitions are in 240-13, another section of the bylaw. So we would submit an article to town meeting to amend that, and we'd hold hearings for, just to add those, as a precursory step, to add those definitions to the bylaw. So we'll have a hearing on the 14th to plug the definitions. We haven't talked about amending 240-13. Similarly, that third article regarding to the mixed-use residential commercial overlay district, lovingly known as Mr. Cod, we would amend that site plan review provision, where we expanded the abutters notification from 100 feet to 300 feet. So that is in the current bylaw in Section 241-93. So we would do, similarly with the definitions, we would amend that at town meeting as well. And since we haven't talked about amending 241-93, we'd have a hearing for that on the September 14th to take care of 240-13, to plug the definitions in, and 241-93 to make that change from 100 feet to 300 feet in the bylaw.
So this draft, these two, for changing the, to the 300 feet for the abutters?
Yes, ma'am.
And for the, adding the new definitions? That's for September 14th, not for tonight?
But the deadline for submitting articles to town meeting is September 3rd. And this is the last meeting the planning board is going to have prior to the warrant closing. So on our agenda tonight, on your second page under Public Discussion, vote warrant articles for November 2021 town meeting, being mixed residential and commercial overlay district, Section 241-92 site plan, and Section 240-13 definitions. So those are those three articles on our warrant tonight that I would love to have the planning board move to submit for the warrant for town meeting. We could have a meeting on August 31st, if you'd like, but I don't believe we need to. I think we need, the court, I think the way is clear. These are the things we want to put on the warrant. So if we have a motion from the board tonight to include those three items in the warrant for town meeting, we'll submit them to the Selectment before the 13th, before September 3rd. And we'll hold the hearing for 240-13 and 241-92 beginning September 14th.
Would you like to make the motion?
If we do that, are we taking it out of order? Because Mr. Santos is next to move it out of order here.
Yeah, we need to wait until we get to.
I don't mind doing it, but I think we have to vote to take it out of order.
You're right. You're right.
Sorry to jump the gun on that.
No, and so did I. And I'm going back and forth with my reading glasses here. And now I see that you're quite right. So let, no, I don't want to, to change the order. I'd rather go back to, for the public hearing to open it for Joseph M. and Maria C. Santos, definitive plan application to create a four-lot subdivision located at 187 Central Ave. Who is here to speak to that?
Paul, do you have a hearing notice for that?
Yes, I do. Madam Chair, the publishing date for this hearing was August 6th and August 13th, 2021. And 14 abutters have been notified by regular mail.
Okay.
And if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So we received an email today from the applicant, I guess the applicant's engineer, saying they wanted a continuance because they weren't ready and people in their office were sick. So we asked if they could send someone because I never like to open a hearing the first night and not go forward with the presentation. That's the first and only time the abutters to a property get an invitation to the meeting. They weren't able to send somebody. So I had a conversation with an awful lot of folks who came to the meeting tonight and let them know that we've spoke, the applicants couldn't make it this evening. So we will be re-noticing those folks and letting them know that we are going to open this hearing on September 14th. That's the next available date. And so we can, if the planning board could move to continue this item until September 14th, we will re-notice the abutters, and they'll be able to come in and hear the presentation of the applicants.
If we could. Jim?
I have a question about this re-notification of the abutters. Didn't you just say that's not our policy to do that? And they only get one notice? And yet now we are gonna, we are going to send a notice? What is our policy?
Well, the state law says you notify the abutters by mail, and you notify them by putting it in the paper.
We've done that.
We've done that. But that's why it's very important that the applicant be here that first night. I'm willing to continue any meeting at any time because the applicant only gets an invitation one time to that opening night. And so in this case, where the applicant didn't come, but all the.
Whose rule are we following here?
We're following a rule of good business practice. I've notified the applicant today in emails. I said, "If you can't come and abutters show up, I want you to provide envelopes so we can re-notify the abutters." And they said, "Okay."
But that's not a requirement. That's your requirement. That's Tom Bott's law.
That is, that is a best management practice for town planners that I follow.
Okay.
There's no Tom Bott law. Not on any books.
Okay. I just don't think it's our policy. It sounds like, well, he already said it once. I'll leave it alone.
Right. Point made. So if we could move along then, if someone willing to make the motion?
Yes, I move that, per the request of the applicant, we have a continuance of this hearing to September 14th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it's continued until September 14th on the Santos matter? Now then, for the, but we already know what our next steps are going to be for the, for Mr. Cod. If we could have a motion to, I think the motion first, to... Have we closed the hearing for Mr. Cod? I think we did.
Yes.
Yeah, we did. Okay. So a motion to place on the warrant three items. Would someone like to make the motion?
I move that we place the following items for the November 2021 town meeting, the mixed residential and commercial overlay district, Section 241-92 site plan, Section 241-13 definitions, and.
We haven't gotten to the other ones yet.
Yeah.
And what?
That's the only three.
That's the three.
We got teed up at this point.
And Bob, there's a correction. It's not 192. It was improperly put on here. It's 193.
Okay. So Section 241-93 site plan. Those are the three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Okay. Next, for discussion, are we ready on zoning bylaw recodification to place this to the line?
So I have hot off the presses, and this is the... Paul, would you mind taking one and pressing it down? So as we said, the deadline for submitting an application or submitting a warrant article for town meeting is September 3rd. So in talking with Bob Mitchell, our consultant, and in working with the working group, you guys have got a couple invitations from me. We're meeting to talk about this tomorrow, I'm going to say? The working group. And then we have a second meeting for the 30th with Bob and Bob to work through the remainder of the items on the matrix. We took the 64-page matrix that Bob and Bob sent me, and I reduced it down to 32 pages, essentially by removing all the things that were in the matrix that says, "Yes, this comment came in. Yes, we agreed to make that change," and just took them out of the matrix just to simplify things. Then I went through the matrix a second time and noted everything that was in the matrix that referenced Phase 2 of the recodification. Because when we asked for comments from people, people commented broadly on the bylaw and not specifically to the recodification, to rearranging the parts. So there are a number of things that came up in Phase 2 that are in the matrix. So I went through that and noted those things that were Phase 2. And in the email I sent out to the working group said, "Here's the 32-page matrix. Take a look in preparation for the meeting on the 26th and the 30th. Those things that say Phase 2, just hop over. Let's get to that." And there's probably 10 or 12 items in there that we have to discuss as the working group. But it takes a little while to get through those things. So I am optimistic, but it's my nature to be optimistic, that we can get to a point that we can have something on the warrant for November. This zoning bylaw, this article says, "To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adopting the recodification of the existing zoning bylaw, is shown in a document entitled, Zoning Bylaw, Town Code, Chapter 240, Articles 1 through 14, October 2021." So that would essentially be this 56-page document that we're not going to put in the paper. The article refers to the changes as made. So when we open the hearing for recodification, tend to be scheduled for September 28th, we'll start that and go through those meetings in September and October. And if we're in October and we're not there, then it simply won't be moved at town meeting. But I think it's incumbent upon us, given the, as long as it's taken to get to this point, that we submit something for the warrant so we're in the game, so we can potentially get there to November. Because the door closes for whether something goes on the warrant on September 3rd.
Well, it certainly seems like a good idea to get it on the warrant. We're probably going to make it, don't you think? No?
Vote.
Oh, I think we will.
Tom is optimistic. I am by nature a pessimist or realist, however you want it.
So on par, or it should be easy. Since you've got both of the polls working for you here.
Question.
Tom, this overlay says that, document titled, Zoning Bylaw, Town Code, Chapter 240, Articles 1 to 14, October 2021.
Yeah.
The attachment is November 2021.
Yeah, but that's, this is Bob's PDFs. I couldn't edit. So essentially, I basically.
It's going to be the new one.
Yeah. So I basically said, this is what it's going to, this is the cover page for this thing. It's, what is it, 100-ish pages long, something like that? It is essentially the recodification of the bylaw.
It'll be a new cover.
Yeah, you've seen, it's got all the new chapters. All the numbers are going to change. Some of the text is going to change.
It's going to be hard to explain at a town meeting.
That's why Bob and Bob get the big bucks, although they've worked for free for about a year on this. So to have an exotic got the big bucks for this. But that, you know, this has been, you know, pretty well documented, the work we've been trying to do on this. And that'll be the discussion we'll be having at our hearings on September 28th and the two in October, is taking people through what changed in the bylaw. So the Bobs will be here for that.
I have the confidence that we're going to complete it and get it to town meeting enough to put it on the warrant.
No, I think, as Tom explained it, if we come to October and we're not.
And it's not ready.
There, then we just withdraw. And I'm fine with that. I just don't like to put something out there that we are rushing to finalize it, you know? And I know this is not a rush when you consider I've been working on it for nine years or something like that.
That's the fine rush here.
Not a rush.
I know now, I use the new one, not rather than the old one, to find them.
It's easier, isn't it?
It's so much easier. So no matter, no matter what, it's a big improvement. Probably we all do. Much better.
Yeah.
So and if it's not, if there are imperfections in it, we can fix them later.
And that's what will happen. I know that.
That is what will happen, no matter what.
I've got my fingers crossed that we will get it to town meeting.
Yeah. Like I said, I spent about a day and a half curating the matrix Yeah, like I said, I spent about a day and a half curating the, the, the matrix, to go through those things, to pare it down to a point where, because sometimes, as you know, we're at these meetings, and we're having a discussion about, wouldn't it be swell if we had this? Or, and so I got rid of some of that convivial discussion out of the matrix, and just got it down to brass tacks of the things we need to look at.
Well, not to put another, you know, likely wrench around, most of the comments, it was clear that the commenters hadn't gone through the whole thing. So that they had attempted to help us, but grew tired, and the help stopped. So we, we really, yeah. So, so I think there's going to be a whole section there, that over the next couple of years, people are going to be coming forward and pointing these things out to us, which we can live with. I don't see why we couldn't know in advance we're gonna live with it.
And, and a lot of the comments were things that are in the bylaw, that have always been in the bylaw, that the bylaw has suffered from, but they're not the subject of recodification. So those are those things for phase two, as we've talked about. So we've made a phase two list, as we've gone through the bylaw, and the commenters who looked at things made comments that have been rolled to phase two, like, well, that's a phase two thing, this is a phase one thing. So when you look at that, you know, thirty-two page matrix, where there's orange bold print that says phase two, many of those comments are from those commenters who basically fed us for phase two.
And there are a lot of other things in there too, that are definitely phase two, that are not orange.
And phase two is much more productive and helpful work than editing the commas and things in phase one. So let's get to it. And this is the only way to get to it.
Right.
And may I compliment Tom? He did an incredible amount of work in sifting through all of this and bringing it to a thirty-three page document that we can actually-
Work with.
Use and work with to finalize everything.
Thanks, but that's what they pay me for. That's what I'm supposed to do. So, but thank you.
Well, you maybe are supposed to do it, but not everybody does it as well.
Well, you just, you just have to basically set things aside and say, this is the priority, and you just, and, and you, it's not something you can flip back and forth, you gotta basically close the door and, you know, just, just put your head down and just hunker down and go through that stuff.
Well, we're grateful. Okay then. So we have-
We'll never get to phase two unless we approve phase one, so I think we need to move on this. And if there's some changes to come up later on, we can pick them up. But I think we need to get it on the warrant so we can move to phase two.
Excellent.
May I adopt his optimism and move that we put zoning bylaw recodification on, oh, I didn't have that in front of me. Okay.
Thanks.
To see if the, I move to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adopting the recodification of the existing zoning bylaws, as shown in a document entitled, zoning bylaw, town code, chapters two forty, articles one through fourteen, October twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
It's on the warrant.
So there's one more article.
One more. Okay, now we're gonna talk about funding for phase two. So this is the beginning of getting to phase two. We need a motion also to get to asking at town meeting in November for funding for, probably for Bob and Bob for phase two. Could we have a motion?
Well, first, I've got a question. Do we have any idea what phase two might cost?
Anticipating that question, sorta. So in the conversations I had with Bob and Bob about this, I said, do we have sort of an order of magnitude number to put on something like this? And as you know, it is, it, it, there's a lot of variables in how much stuff will go into phase two, what are those sort of things that we'll put into phase two. So at this point, it is the, on our agenda for the thirtieth, with Bob and Bob in the working group, to look at what those items are in the current recodification, and sort of put a sharper pencil on what might go into phase two. So Bob Mitchell is going to be putting his pen to paper over the weekend as well, and sort of prioritizing those things and trying to get us a, a number that we can employ for that. But there's not a number right now, but they're working on that.
But there will be. And this was discussed at an earlier pre-meeting, that we need the answer in November, because it surely will be asked, and by that time, we'll have a dollar figure attached to it, so that it's a proper-
And, and something like this goes to the, to the finance committee, and there'll be discussions with the finance committee about that, as to what that number is. So that first part is figuring out, what is the scope of phase two? And do we have a phase two A, a phase two B? So looking at that. And that's the discussion we'll be having with the working group and our consultants on August thirtieth.
Okay. So we're ready to vote on this without knowing that?
Okay. So I move that we put, that we recommend to the warrant, to be put in its appropriate place in the financial aspect of the warrant, funding for phase two zoning bylaw recodification.
Second.
For the discussion?
Doesn't have to go to the finance committee before it gets to the warrant?
No.
No, apparently not.
No. Anyone can put something on the warrant. A board, a committee, ten taxpayers can put something on the warrant. Whether it gets moved, whether it gets recommended, is another matter.
Well, so often we see the warrant, and the night of the, a town meeting, people scurrying around to make adjustments and make some recommendations that are then added at the town meeting, and it gets very confusing when you do that.
I hope that doesn't happen.
Hope so.
Tom, can, can a property owner singly put something on the warrant, his own application, without having ten, can, can, for like a rezoning change, could that be done?
No, as I understand it, a, a board or committee consumes that something for the warrant. But if it's not sort of an official government entity, like the board or a committee, that require ten taxpayers. So ten taxpayers can petition annual town meeting to put something on the warrant.
So a, a single property owner cannot petition to do his, changing his own zoning? I thought he could. I, I might be wrong, but I, I, that was my understanding.
It, I have always understood it, that-
In fact, I got that from talking to the town, I must have misheard them, because I actually went to the planning, the selectman's office and got a petition, and they told me that. So I, I'll have to double check. I might have been misinformed. Because I was told that a single property owner does not have to get the ten signatures of ten other voters, and could do it on their own land. But I was only told that verbally, and I might have misheard. I'll have to double check.
I have, like I said, I've been at this for a while, but I've never seen one individual property owner. And it seems odd, it should be like, well, I'm, I'm one guy, why can't I get my property, petition for my property be changed?
I, I don't, I think that's what they told me. I'm gonna go ask in writing this time. I think I misheard them. I must have misheard them.
Maybe they were making an assumption that anyone can get ten people.
No, they, they actually spelled out the difference to me.
Oh.
This is in the, in the selectman's office?
Yes.
Okay.
Diane, a couple days ago, and she said something different than you just said. I just-
Diane is razor sharp, so.
Well, I could be, could have misheard her. I didn't write it down. It just didn't, what, I have, there's a reason why I'm paying attention to this, obviously. We'll look at it.
Yeah. I always thought those were petitioner's articles.
I thought a petitioner's article could do it by themselves and not have the ten votes. And the ten votes were, you're doing a general thing, not relating to your own property. And that's the way it, I thought I heard it. I must have heard wrong.
There might be two rules. One for petitioner's articles, like celebrating a new holiday, and a different one for zoning things, requires-
Mine was particularly to zoning, I was asking about the zoning.
It might apply only to zoning.
I'll, I'll touch base with Diane and see what she's got. And sometimes we have different information.
Could have heard it wrong.
Okay.
Okay, but let's, let's deal now with the funding for phase two zoning bylaw recodification. And Pat has read the, the motion, and now it remains to vote on, unless this is for the discussion.
We need a second.
I second it.
You had a second, okay.
We had a discussion. Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so I think that we've done the, of the business on the agenda. Are there any announcements?
I have one.
Oh.
Let's, excuse me. I've, several years I've been attending the Open Cape Summit with the Cape Cod Commission. And it's generally at a country club in East, Eastern Cape. This year it was on a Zoom meeting, and they had not only the presentations, but then breakout sessions. And I attended a good part of both yesterday and today. And I just wanted to mention a couple of things that were mentioned. Yesterday, a woman by the name of Ellen Durham-Jones, she's a professor of, and director of urban design program at Georgia Tech. And she gave a number of examples about redevelopment. And if you have a chance to look it up, you may want to see what she's referring to. She began with a MASP comment showing how that has developed. And she went on to several other areas. One in Greenwich, Greenwich, Connecticut, was a sixteen acre industrial site that's being converted over. One in Austin, Texas, Tulsa, Oklahoma, Domain, Texas. Petri Corners in Georgia was a five-hundred acre office park. And Maplewood Living Street, Minnesota, they were talking about narrowing of roads and putting more greenery in. And the last one they mentioned was Meridian Green in Connecticut, which is a mall redevelopment. So there was a lot of really interesting things that she presented in general about these developments. And if you can get a look at it, it might be worth doing. The second thing, today, this morning, there was a transportation-related session, and it included Tom Caher of Cape Cod Regional Transit, Steve Tupper from Cape Cod Commission, and the new executive director of Mass DOT. One of the interesting things from the head of DOT was that the present federal funding for infrastructure does not include funding for the bridges, which surprised me a bit. But he did allude to other options, but he didn't say what they were. So I don't know what that means.
It must be in the budget thing, that-
But I thought that was a rather interesting comment to make this morning. So, for what's worth, I mention it.
I think he even sent around a letter reassuring people that, it must be in the budget thing, because there's the infrastructure thing, and then the bu, Tom?
So, two things, I was at that exact same conference that Paul was at. I didn't see him by the Zoom water cooler, by the way. I was looking for you. So, so Dr. Ellen, who's the director of the program at Georgia Tech, I hear it's a very good school. They let me out, so maybe, maybe it's not that good a school.
It used to be.
It used to be, back, back when NJIT was a place to go to, by the way. Little IT rivalry here. But actually, I, I asked the staff, because I was, I was listening to it while I was traveling Thursday, and said, we should send Ellen's presentation to the board. Because my thought was, it's an exact sort of thing that we're looking at for, for form-based code and for the Davis Straits. Those same sort of things, on larger scales and on smaller scales. So I had the exact same thought that Paul had. And so since we were signed up for the conference, those presentations are recorded. And so when they're finished and they're available for publication, we'll forward them on to you folks. Regarding the bridges, because I was in that same meeting, once again, I'm sitting behind you, the, the, the discussion was, is that the infrastructure bill didn't specifically call out by name dollars to replace those two bridges. And he said, and while it's not in there, through, and this is where I lost him, through, through a series of, of, of lawmakers, sort of shenanigans, maybe shenanigans isn't the word, motions and movements and things like that, they're fairly certain that those funds can be appropriated out of that infrastructure bill for those two federally owned bridges. Because as we know, the Army Corps of Engineers owns two bridges on the entire planet. And they don't want either one of them. So they want to give them to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we're willing to take them after they fix them. So the plan has been, the previous plan was, the feds will fix the bridges and turn them over to Mass DOT, but there's nothing specific in the infrastructure bill that references funding for those two bridges. And that's what I understood, that Paul understood.
You know, he's done such a good job all these years.
But some form of assurance that the funding is in there.
Some sort of assurance that the, the, the process can be worked to assure that the funds are there for the bridges.
That didn't sound too reassuring.
They, they're much smoother than I am, those fellows on, at the conferences.
I meant their words, not yours.
Sounds like they're cobbling it together, doesn't it?
You know, they have to grease it to get it passed.
Right.
Any other announcements?
I have some comments, if I may. I haven't seen meetings from the, admitted to the meetings for the last several weeks. Is there a reason why we're not getting draft minutes?
Yes.
Care to share that with us?
I'd be happy to. So-
I feel a little reluctant to say, well, I don't have them.
Well, Sherry, our longtime minute taker, asked to quit about two years ago. She said, I would, much as I love hanging out with you guys, I would love not to hang out with you guys anymore. So she offered to, to retire if we could find another minute taker. So we found another minute taker, and she came and did minutes for one meeting during COVID and resigned. And so Sherry stayed on. So since then, we've been looking for someone else to do the minutes, and apparently we have someone, Sarah June Conan. She would have been here with us this evening, but she's under the weather, actually not under the weather, she was, she's, she's exposed, and she's in COVID protocol, probably can't say that out loud. So Sarah June will be our new minute taker. I sent her an email earlier today and said, love to say hi, introduced myself. So she will be reviewing the tapes over the last couple of meetings, and she'll be producing those meetings. I always reached out to Sherry, and we played phone tag a couple times to say, hey, how you been? Thanks for being here. Best luck in your new venture. So Sherry, our longtime and fabulous minute taker, has retired. And Sarah June, Sarah Jane, Sarah June, I think, is our new minute taker.
What's her name?
Sarah June Conan, I believe. Went to North Carolina State, another ACC school. We're proud in the ACC that our, that our athletes can do math. In the SEC, they, they just play football. So, so anyhow, we have a new minute taker, and she'll be filling in those minutes that we've been missing.
So better than getting assistant town planner.
You know, you wanna, you wanna have those people save their powder for other stuff.
So they're forthcoming?
Forthcoming.
May I ask you another question?
Sure.
My cohort here, I miss very much, any update on whether she's, when she's coming back?
I, I was, I was gonna call her today, but the day sometimes gets away from me. I didn't get a chance to call her today. See how she's feeling.
She's well?
Yes, she's well.
Okay.
She's waiting for doctor approval to be able to co-mingle with people like us.
Yeah, and I also-
Tell her I miss her. I mean, it's lonely down in Zandvoort, John can tell you.
I'm lonely too.
Well, I also had a brief conversation with our health agents today, because as you know, some committees have decided to go virtual, having the option to go virtual or be in person. And sort of just had a conversation with him about, what are we seeing? Is there some sort of, should we be looking at the potential for going virtual at some point in the future? Because I know you guys would prefer to be here in person. And if he was to tell me something like, you should definitely be thinking that, we would have to advertise things tomorrow for a virtual meeting on the fourteenth. But he told me, at this point, where things are at, he did, he said, you know, you can continue operating as you are, because there's, he, he basically didn't say, oh, you should absolutely go virtual. He said, you know, for what we got right now, you know, we're maintaining, we talked about, you know, you know, the future, and no one can tell what the future is, other than, there's been a lot of uptick in a lot of different places, that maybe have different conditions and different mindsets than the Commonwealth does. But when you're in a town like ours, or like yours, where a lot of people come from a lot of different parts of the country, and a lot of the people go on vacation before they go back to school in lots of different places, we don't know what's gonna happen for the first, you know, couple weeks of September. But I, I just wanted to check in with Scott to make sure that I didn't, there wasn't anything I needed to know, you know, going forward with a September meeting, and should we be looking at posting our meetings as-
But if we wish to change, we need to get close to two weeks' notice?
Well, under the, under the rules, when we send out a hearing notice, that hearing notice says the meeting's gonna be in this room.
Yep.
And if the meeting wasn't gonna be in this room, we would have to send out a hearing notice to say the meeting is gonna be, you know, virtual on that Zoom thing. So that's why I had this conversation with Scott, to make sure that, you know, what we're doing right now, we, we don't have to take any, you know, immediate action to change what we're doing. And his assessment was, we don't have to do anything immediately to, was what we're doing right now.
However, select board have gone to Zoom meetings again?
They have. They, they did that two weeks ago. They're at this meeting as well. And that was essentially, my first question to Scott was, to paraphrase it, do they know something that we don't know? And I think it was just a decision of, you know, the, their, the, the decision of the board, of the chair, to say, I think we should do Zoom. Now, if you've been to a selectman's meeting, there's typically a lot more folks out there than are in our meetings. Not that you're less popular than them, not at all. But there are a lot more people sometimes come to their meetings. So I don't know what their, what their thought was, but my question to Scott was, you know, is there something we should be considering doing? And he said, you know, probably at this point, we're fine with the status quo that we've got. And I asked that because I know you guys like to meet personally.
As long as we're all comfortable, meeting in person?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so this is what we're doing. Thank you.
Well, it's interesting, because the transportation, I guess it's called advisory meeting, committee now, has decided to stick with Zoom, and have done it all the way through. But the, the other meeting I attend, the Water Quality Management Committee, without that word, meets here, an open meeting. So it's very inconsistent. I'm not sure why.
Well, the, the direction that we got from, from town management, from town council, was, it's, the, the board decides what they want to do. The Conservation Commission prefers to meet Zoom. Committees in other towns prefer to do Zoom. The direction we got was- The direction we got was, it's the discretion of the board or committee to meet in person or in Zoom.
So we're finished now with announcements going forward. General correspondence. I think the only thing that we got for general correspondence that needs... Paul, you sent the letter that Eric and I have worked on as part of general correspondence, and I think you all got a copy of that. I don't think there was anything else.
Well, if I could, there was actually a letter from Mr. Drewley in correspondence as well.
Oh, excuse me. Yes, that's right.
So when I got a call, I guess on Thursday, from Melinda, when she said the letter came in, I said, well, I'd put it in correspondence, but if Charlotte wants to put it on the agenda, we can put it on the agenda. So I don't know if there was some, because I think she talked to you.
Right, and I talked to you, and you said, we don't generally do that, and we're not going to.
Well, because we don't have to have an application for a lot release. So the nature of Mr. Drewley's letter was basically, and I'll just paraphrase, he, I'd like to know if the planning board would be comfortable allowing building permits to be issued on the site and holding a certificate of occupancy. Is that pretty, pretty accurate?
That's a good part of it, yes.
Maybe I could read it.
Please do.
Okay. Is that all right, John?
Sure.
All right. Written on August 19th. John saying, I am requesting that the board allow up to three building permits and no occupancy permits on Dylan's way until a bond is in place to ensure the completion of a new road and municipal services. Town water is in place, the first coat of asphalt has been placed on the road, gas main construction has been paid for in full and is expected to be installed within two weeks. Eversource is working on drawings, but it may be another month or two before electricity is installed. I'm offering that Lot Six be held for security and that no occupancy permits be issued until a bond acceptable to this board has been recorded. This will allow me to continue working installing services and start construction of up to three homes while getting an acceptable cash or surety bond in place. The amount of work left to be done is valued at less than $100,000, and the lot is worth double that amount. I believe language in number 10 of the recorded covenant allows this board to vary the method of security, as long as, in the opinion of this board, it's sufficient to secure performance. Thank you for your consideration. John Drewley, manager of Cape Cod Development.
Now, what do we do? Can we make the motion?
Can we do that?
Because it's not a hearing now, and it's not even on discussion, so how do we deal with it?
Well, and that's why I wanted to just bring up the, you know, the topic tonight, because if it was on the agenda, likely there could be some discussion about that, about the board making a decision about that. So when I got the memo, when I got back here on Monday, I went back in and looked, because we actually had a conversation about this with town council. So the other thing that you see in your packet is this memorandum from town council about building permits and certificates of occupancy. And the reason that town council wrote this memo was because the Conservation Commission was concerned that people weren't meeting the requirements of their permit, and they wanted the ability to withhold an occupancy permit from somebody if they hadn't met the conditions of the Conservation Commission's order of conditions. And council's memo essentially says, that's not within the authority of the Conservation Commission, certificate of occupancy, or within the authority of the building commissioner. So...
But this doesn't deal with occupancy permits. It specifically says it does not.
Can we read section 10 that that refers to? I think there's some language in there that'll help clarify what we're talking about here.
Section 10, we'll read it in a minute. This is in, what was this called?
Section 10 of the covenant.
This is from the covenant. Nothing herein shall prohibit the applicant from varying the method of securing the construction of ways and installation of municipal services from time to time, and from securing by one or in part by one and in part by another of the methods described in MGL Chapter 41, Section 81U, as long as such security is sufficient, in the opinion of the planning board, to secure performance of the construction and installation.
So that's important, because we've done this for the Ballymead development. They did the exact same thing. They put a bunch of lots up, and they put them in security, and we accepted that as a totally different method, and they eventually did their bond and whatever. But they came to us, and they put up two or three lots.
More than X.
A lot, but I mean, and this lot is clearly worth more than $200,000. So I think this is great security, and I think we should move, if it was on the agenda, I would have been making a motion to move forward tonight. But for some reason, it didn't get on the agenda.
I asked for it to be on the agenda and was told it could not be on the agenda, and that's why it's not on the agenda.
Why couldn't it be on the agenda?
What I said was that if we had a lot release request, it would be perfunctory on the agenda. So we had a letter from John Drewley requesting an opinion. This is a very gray area. It's gray for me because the conditions of a lot release are defined by Massachusetts as a bond, a cash bond, or a covenant in place. And typically, how we have done those things is we have had that sort of assurance in place. And that comes when the road has been paved, there's a, just...
Tom, are you saying from now on, we're not going to take a covenant of the land being sold, and we're going to wait till a bond is in place? That's a change in policy.
So, so let's say that our surety is these lots. We've got these lots, and they're going to ensure that those lots are the surety, and if the road doesn't get built and the developer goes under, we have the lots in what? We sell them to pay for the road to be done?
But this decision in the state law is solely the planning boards. It specifically says it's the planning board's judgment. And I, and I think it's just a planning board issue, not a town planner issue, whether he thinks that it's appropriate or not. This, it is clear...
But look where we are. Yes, I agree with you.
The adequacy is determined by us.
Look where we are now. And now, because of its placement on the agenda, we're not being allowed to act on this.
Well, somebody made a decision not to put it on the agenda, and I also disagree with that.
Is there any reason why we cannot say that administrative approval can be given?
I thought it should have been on the agenda, and if it was, I would have moved it, but...
I, I will say this, that while I was traveling on Thursday, and we're having this conversation on the phone, there may have been a different outcome if I was sitting here in the office and having a chance to take a look at all the documents before me. But I wasn't. I was on vacation. I was headed through rural Maine, and I said, if Charlotte wants to put it on the agenda, have it put on the agenda. Did you and I actually talk as well on Friday or on Thursday while I was away? Or was that just you and, Melinda and I?
I thought it was you.
I don't...
Can I make a suggestion here, please? I didn't realize all this, Tom. If I, if I do the proper application for next meeting, would it be on the agenda?
Yeah, we'll put it on the agenda, but I, and you and I, you know, I talked about this in the field as well. And I thought at the time, we talked about it in the field, you had a pretty good idea that we don't release lots based on holding lots. So absolutely, you can put it on the agenda. Absolutely, we can have this discussion with town council, but, and we'll take a look at it. But this is sort of an old-school sort of thing that boards used to do, to go, yeah, we'll hold on to some lots. But, you know, the mechanism of selling a lot to pay for a road is onerous and cumbersome and not something you typically see in the modern era.
This, I just point, it, the law specifically says, in the opinion of the planning board, that's what the language says. It doesn't say town council, town planner, select board. The subdivision control law specifically says the planning board has the right to decide the adequacy. And that's our discussion, and I think we should keep it amongst ourselves, the adequacy. And we've done this for years. I know Tom says it's old school, and now it's Tom's way.
It is not Tom's way. I object to you making that assumption that I am...
Okay, then, old school.
Wait, wait a minute.
Sorry, forget about it. I take it back. I misunderstood what old school meant.
I get it.
This is not helpful.
No, I'm done.
Not helpful. And let's not talk to one another that way. I think that John's suggestion of, if it's, we're going to have this on the agenda for our next meeting, which is the 14th, and we can deal with it then.
Fine.
So we're dropping it now.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Jim, you've made a good point.
So there's some other correspondence in the mail.
You referring to?
Yeah, well, Pat, you had asked about the charter review, and I thought that'd be a lot, but Melinda, I'd already printed them for you.
Oh, she had, all right. God bless her.
So this is the interim report from the Charter Commission. It involves the actions of the planning board as well. It is for your information. I got it from Peter Clark around August 8th, and so I have not had an opportunity to look at it.
Can Bob read it into the record, though?
Let me get a glass of water first.
All 37 pages of it, Bobby, you ready?
And I caps on.
So the planning board's bold answer?
I'm working my way through the purple folder and finding it.
All righty.
I'm not reading this into the...
No, we're not.
Definitely not. And people who want to can drop by the office to see it. You're not sending us that whole thing.
What's that?
This, the interim final report.
You did send it.
Yeah, you got hard copies. We emailed it to you, and then Melinda printed it as well. So you could take a copy home.
I tried to read it. I quit after about four pages.
You're braver than me.
I ask you a question. What's an interim final report? Is it final, or is it not a final?
I'll look that up for you.
It's a final report, isn't it?
It was, I, I don't know. I don't get a chance, I don't get a chance to see all the stuff that comes in before it gets to you, unfortunately.
And then finally, we have in the correspondence folder, the planning department goals that Tom apparently provided as part of an annual performance review. This is first of its kind since I've been here. Town manager has amended those goals and added some others.
So what I did, and I think I emailed this to you as well, is that as part of this annual performance review we never had, I was asked to put together some goals for the planning board, or for the planning department, excuse me. And those included the creation of a community development department, recodification, form-based code, Mr. Condon.
Excuse me, and I got my copy here somewhere.
Yeah, so those goals were the creation of a community development department, Davis Straits form-based code, mixed-use residential overlay district recodification, update local comprehensive plan, to which the town manager added goals of facilitate timely implementation of new permitized system, and continue to submit my quarterly department reports in a timely manner. So those are the goals that I had provided to the town manager. He has amended them somewhat, and I just wanted to provide that for you, so you know what's going on on our side of things.
Okay, this update of the local comprehensive plan, is that, is there a timeline for that?
There is. This is a multi-year process. It starts with the planning board's review and discussions with most town departments, contracting, contacting, contracting with the commission, and likely future year funding will be required. So updating the LCP is one of those things we've talked about, and one of those things that we're due for. We're just trying to get to the bandwidth to do that with the other things on our plate. So we are having a, regarding that bandwidth, tomorrow, after the recodification meeting, we're having a meeting with our form-based code consultants on where we're at with form-based code. They've sent us a 17-page document on where we're at with form-based code. And after we have our meeting about that tomorrow and finalize that, we'll be sending it out to the board as well as the working group as to where we're at with form-based code. And that will likely be sent at the first meeting for our form-based code. So back to local comprehensive plan, on the list of things to do, we just have to have the bandwidth to get to that. So if we get through November town meeting with Mr. Condon and recodification, and we're working for April town meeting, maybe we're looking at an April town meeting funding request for some funding to help with doing an LCP update.
Yeah, because I think the three of us can attest to how much work it took and how long it took, and it would...
Several years.
Oh, yeah. And it would be beneficial to have people like the Bobs helping us with that.
Well, and that's not necessarily, you know, they're bailiwick.
Oh, I was saying, like the Bobs.
No one, no one ever made money doing a comprehensive plan for somebody. It's one of those things people do, because it's sort of their product that they do. But most of the times, as you point out, it takes a couple years. It took a couple years in Kingston, took a couple years in Hingham, most places, to do it right and to have that public engagement and go through those sort of scenarios of looking at the eight elements of a comprehensive plan. Plus, it just takes some time and some staffing and some bandwidth to get to that, so...
And also needs somebody to be the chairman of the committee.
Is that a second for Jim Fox to be the chairman?
I think he was looking at my direction.
I didn't see anybody jumping up.
Charlotte, can I make two more comments?
Yes.
One is the, did some work today with the friends at Falmouth Library Hillbilly set up the book sale. Begins Thursday in front of the library. It's postponed from the Fourth of July, but there's a lot of books there. So if you want to come out Thursday and Friday, and I think Saturday, too, it's this week.
Yeah, I saw tables there today.
The other thing I want to mention is, last week, I went up to Joint Base Cape Cod for a tour. And obviously, there's a big meeting tomorrow at the library, at the school, where both the Joint Base Cape Cod, Colonel Porter is going to make a presentation, and some people are going to make their side of the story, too. So that's tomorrow night. Should be very interesting. But the takeaway I have from going up there, and we spent more than three hours looking at virtual firing range, firing ranges, training, environmental cleanup, talking to the people doing the cleanup, talking to others, that they have a program up there of environmental remediation and so forth that I think is worth listening to. I'm not telling you to vote one way or the other. But I spoke with Colonel Porter after it, and I said, you know, you haven't made your case, and you need to do that. So hopefully, they'll have some more detail on what they're really trying to do with this firing range and what protections they're making, and then people can make an informed decision on whether they want to support it or not.
But it won't be up to any kind of a vote?
Yeah, who gets to vote?
It's not a decision that's going to be made by this town in any way.
Well, the board's selectmen were going to consider not voting in favor of it. Sue Moran said she's not in favor of it. I don't know. Did it go up to the governor?
I think that's just advisory.
Because it's the least facility. But I think they need to tell their side of the story, because right now, we're just hearing the opposite side. And I think people need to hear the other side and make an informed decision on whether they're doing makes sense or not. It's not what they did before, so...
That's good to know, Paul. Thank you. If there's no other business, I move adjournment.
Hold on. Future agenda items.
Future agenda items?
Last time, I asked that we'd be able to discuss A and Rs, and it wasn't on for this meeting, so hopefully, next meeting, we'll have it on the agenda.
It is on the big board upstairs for September 14th.
Fantastic.
Ed and I talked about it earlier today, after you asked, Ed.
I'm not going to give any clues. I want the suspense to build.
Now, we'll adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.